You're putting 1-1?
Yeah, because I was out of the country.
Oh, yeah, let's go.
How'd you remember that?
Because I was in Mexico. Let's see, when did I come back? When was I sworn in? I missed the first meeting.
I didn't want to be, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, March 20th, meeting of the Chickapi School Committee. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In compliance with open meeting law, we are right now recording and live broadcasting this meeting. Is anyone in the audience doing so? It doesn't appear that anyone is. So any of our members joining us remotely? It appears we're all here and present except for David Barcelo. Is David joining us remotely? I can't read up there. David, are you there? All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for those who serve in the military and for all those who per- Thank you. Sarah, could we have a roll call for board attendants?
Mayor View?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Barcelo? Mr. Dout?
Here.
Mrs. Perret?
Present.
Mrs. Schofield?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Lamath?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Present.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Loebz?
Present.
Mr. Zatella? Eleven present, one absent.
Thank you, Sarah. Public announcements by committee members. I'll start to my left, Vice Chair.
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Brooks?
I would like to give a shout out to Principal Massey and Vice Principal Aclair for welcoming me to Litwin School, giving me a tour of their building and showing me the many great programs that they have implemented. It's easy to see why the teachers and staff are so well-respected and admired by the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonny. And Mrs. Schofield. I don't know why I am formal tonight, but Mrs. Schofield.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to give a shout out to your office, Chloe and Monica, for organizing the tours that you went to all the schools. And I was happy to attend several of the school tours. And kind of echoing with what Mr. Brooks said as far as the climate in the schools, the amount of love. And you could see that it was, the schools that I entered were just sending out a message of family and facilitating a good learning environment. I was impressed with several of the things that I saw. The sense of community, the environments conducive to learning. One thing that struck me particularly was the new ID system where myself and you were also, had to show identification and had badge printed up. That's something I didn't know about, so I thought that was really a great way to increase our security for entering buildings. The other thing that impressed me was one of the STEM, well, all the STEM classrooms impressed me, but a particular experiment at Fairview with the water filtration system was being demonstrated by the children who had gone through, where they had to create a water filtration system, which kind of sparked my memory of, for years and years and years, all the fifth graders in the city attended a field trip to the wastewater treatment plant in Chickapi. And I know that when COVID came, they stopped doing that. And then I had spoken to administration about what we could do to kind of bring that field trip back. Several of the fifth grade teachers had reached out to me, and I know that admin had reached out to the person running it. And I thought maybe, maybe with your power and pull, maybe you could work your magic and bring that program back again. On a final note, I'm looking at you, Mayor.
I said we can do that. Are you sure we can do that? Grace, there's three minutes time limit on this.
No, wait, I got two more things. I wanted to also thank the Stefanic Stars for the wonderful production of Aladdin. I could not believe that these children were in third, fourth, and fifth grade. It just blew my mind. It was really a commitment to hard work and dedication, and it was just fabulous to see. And I'm also looking forward to Chickapi High Drama Club presentation. Thank you.
I believe that's this weekend.
Yes.
Well, that's everything I was going to say about my tour. Thank you, Grace, and thanks for joining me. Mrs. Susan Zatella-Lopez.
Okay, thanks. Recently, we were all sent an email from one of our hard-working teachers in one of our high schools, having to do with student discipline. And I would like to request that we put it on the agenda a couple of weeks from now, Sarah, please, and Superintendent. I appreciate Superintendent you responding promptly to the emails, even though you were away on a conference, and making sure that this teacher made sure that you had read her email thoroughly. We appreciate your attention to it, and I would be grateful if we could put it. I think everyone would be, would be a good thing to have it on the agenda a couple of weeks from now so we can discuss it at length. And maybe even a month from now, it might take a couple of weeks just or a month to get ready to make sure we know exactly what we're talking about. And so within the next month, please, thank you.
Mr. Zatella?
All set.
All set, Mayor, thank you. All set, Doug, sure.
Happy spring, although it's a little blustery out there right now. Just a couple of announcements. I know I saw on the internet that Camp Opie will have a new location this year. It's going to be at Stefanic School on Meadow Street. And the registration, according to the notice, is open online starting April 4th at 10:00 a.m. All you have to do is go to www.chickapirec.com. And it's a wonderful program for the youth of our city, ages five through 13. And as well, we have the Chickapi High Drama Club presenting Broadway and Beyond Friday evening and Saturday evening at 7:00 p.m. So it sounds like a great program celebrating great music. And I'd also like to give a shout out to Duane Barker and Marie Ferretti, who were the student speakers for the Student Advisory Council at our last meeting. I did not have the opportunity to say what a wonderful job they did in their presentation. And for the viewing public, I do have office hours at the Chickapi Public Library in the lower level at 6:00 p.m. this coming Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna.
I'm all set.
And Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Although I wasn't able to attend, I too want to just echo the sentiments for the Stefanic Stars and the performance at Aladdin. Had lulling reviews from my daughter and my mother-in-law who were able to attend for me. And again, you know, the work that those kids do and the commitment that they and their families make is, you know, is nothing short of amazing. So for those students, you know, I congratulate them on just on the hard work that they put in, and I hope that they can continue to pursue whatever dreams it is they may have because they are truly shining stars in our community. Thank you.
And Ron.
All set, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to talk a little bit about the tour. I've made it a point to make sure that I got into all 15 of our schools. And I can tell you that it was incredible. It's something that I wanted to do pre-pandemic. And the interview process that we went through for a superintendent search made me realize that I wasn't spending enough time in our school. So thank you, Dr. Ware, for that. And I had the opportunity to go, like I said, through 15 of them. And I'll tell you, I could work at every single one of them. I had such a great experience and the camaraderie and the school pride. You could feel it resonating through every building. I went there with a mission to clean up Chickapi, and I've reached out to as many kids as I can. And I'm still not done to promote a Clean City initiative and getting the students from pre-K to seniors to pledge not to litter in Chickapi and not to litter ever for the rest of their lives. And also to promote pride, pride in yourself, who you are, your family, your heritage, where you come from, pride in your school. But most importantly, be proud that you live in our city. And I too want to take a moment to recognize the cast, the directors of Aladdin Junior. They were incredible. I asked them, had the opportunity to speak to them on numerous occasions, but I asked them, what's the, if they wish they could do another day, another production, and all their hands went up. So I want to thank the Maynard's and also Deb Sutherland and everyone involved who make something like that a reality for those kids at Stefanic School. And I did say this, and I'll say it publicly, there's a commitment to continue to do that here in Chickapi as long as I'm serving as Mayor of Chickapi. I think it's short money for expanding arts and culture in Chickapi and promoting it. And just seeing the experience that those kids had was something very special. So that's all I have, and I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Dr. Marcus Ware.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, School Committee. I'll be brief. I echo all the sentiments up here about the play. I let Amanda Therio know that she as the principal and working. I will also give a shout out to the parents, the parents for allowing their child to participate in a production at that level, which was about two hours with an intermission, of course. But why I say that's important is because that's a huge undertaking, and that is just a testimony to our parents in the community. So I want to give a shout out to Stefanic, but give a shout out to the parents as well.
Thank you. We'll move on to public input. We have no one signed up for it, so we'll move right on to our visitor.
Want to read her? Student Opportunity Act, Ms. Jen Belleville, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Accountability.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight to talk about the Student Opportunity Act Plan. But I wanted to provide you with a little background information as well as just some information about the Student Opportunity Act. So the Student Opportunity Act requires every school district in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to create an evidence-based plan for reducing persistent disparities in achievement across our student groups. This is a three-year plan that we have to provide progress reports on annually as well as we can change our priorities along the way. You do have a PowerPoint in front of you. I'm just going to wait one second while it just goes up. Perfect. So the overarching goal of this is to ensure that every student has high-quality public education. The plan is not related to the funding. A district receives additional Chapter 70 funds because of the state's increased investments in education through FY '27 and the revised Chapter 7 funding formula that was introduced into the SOA legislation. But the plan is not tied to the funding. So with that, the purpose of the SOA plan is not to describe how we're going to spend the additional funding. The SOA plan focuses on our evidence-based programs and our strategies that will improve our educational experiences and outcomes of students, including specifically our English-language learners, our students with disabilities, and our low-income students. So just to kind of go back into the past, in 2021, Chickapi submitted their original three-year evidence-based plan to DESI. In '21, '22, and in '22, '23, they had to submit a progress report of how we were doing in closing those achievement gaps. With that, at that time, we focused only on priority areas. The priority areas for last year, which were actually slightly different than when the plan was originally submitted in 2021, was to expand our access to full-day pre-K in our four-year-olds, for early college programs for students underrepresented in higher education, inclusion and co-teaching for students with disabilities and English-language learners, expanding our capacity to address social, emotional, learning, and mental health needs, as well as increasing opportunities for all students to engage in the arts, enrichment, world language, athletics, and elective courses. This year, the state did make some changes to how we were going to submit our Student Opportunity Act plans. So this year, the state put out 10 priority focus areas. Districts were asked to choose one to three from this list. Under this list, they were given specific evidence-based programs that were tied to that. So DESI provided everything that we were to choose from. We had to focus on our evidence-based programs. We have to annually report our data to DESI reflecting our progress towards our targets as we move our student achievement. And we can amend our plans annually. So at the end of next year, we will look at our data and we'll say, is this what we want to continue for our focus areas and our priorities moving forward? So with that, we really took a hard look on what we wanted to do for our focus areas. And please remember, these focus areas are very, very broad. And they're very broad for a reason, is because then from there, it really wants to tie it down of how school districts are specifically going to look at their programs, how we use data, what curriculum programs we're using, the supports, the staffing, to then help us close those achievement gaps. So our first focus area is really around the multi-tiered systems of support, academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. So what that really is talking about as far as our evidence-based programs is that comprehensive tiered supports. And it's looking at, in our district, what do we have at Tier One academically, socially, behaviorally, for all of our students? And then where are we at Tier Two? And where are we at Tier Three? We all know that that is a focus for our district, is that we know that we want to look at the equity around what our Tier One, all of our students are getting, and then the supports that we're going to put into place, not only for their academic achievement, but for their social achievement and for behavior and discipline. The next focus area continues on that MTSS process around our tiered systems of support, and really specifically then talks about those high-leverage practices for students with disabilities. This includes also our English-language learners. We chose the targeted academic support and acceleration. You see a little asterisk there because that is one of the commissioner, we were asked to choose specific things that the commissioner prioritized. That is one of the priority areas for the commissioner. And I know you've all seen, you know, the summer work that is going on, especially out of Student Services with Ms. Cruiser. We have our Acceleration Academies going for April vacation. This is a lot of the work that we are doing and continuing to focus on. Our third focus area is around that preschool. So we've talked a lot about expanding our preschool opportunities specifically for our four-year-olds, but across our entire district. I know it was a big conversation when the mayor visited, oh, this is Zatella. Our early childhood coordinator is on Day Three, which is very exciting. And we were fast and furiously getting our lottery as well as information out to our families around our preschool program, as well as expanding our opportunities with hopefully the grant that we applied for through the state as well as with VOC, Head Start, and our outside agencies. I did include additional focus evidence-based programs in here because these are two areas that we are continuing to do a lot of work with. And I think as we continue to get our multi-tiered systems of support in place, as we're looking at our academic pathways as well as the other pathways in our district, these are areas that we're going to continue to expand on that you will probably see in the next two years. So we've talked a lot about Chapter 74. I know that Ms. Cruiser and I have done a lot of work around the early college, especially with HCC, and the opportunities that we can provide our students, as well as the educator preparation partners. Every time we sit here, we talk about, okay, how many positions do we have left? What do we still need? I had the pleasure of being at Bay Path University today and talk about a partnership with them along with HCC around building paraprofessional pathways, as well as other opportunities to provide for our staff as well as our students at Chickapi High as we build our education pathway. So that, the education prep partnership is also one of the big priorities for the commissioner. What the school committees are asked to vote on is simply the prioritization focus areas. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Sonny Brooks, go ahead.
All right. To get to these students, we have to get to the parents. What is the plan there? Because without the input from the parents for the disabled child, the physically disabled child, the English-language child, that if we can't get through to the parents, we can put out all these programs during the day, and these kids are not going to benefit from it if we can't get the parents on board with these programs. if we can't get the parents on board with these programs.
So, Mr. Brooks, as you know, we're doing a lot around family and community engagement. We have hired some family and community engagement liaisons, as well as we've hired another interpreter. I know that those are positions that you will continue to see in the budget, as well as we've talked about, a lot about our communication systems. So even with the implementation of Parent Square, which is translating everything into the multiple languages of the families that we serve in an app that is accessible on a cellphone. We've improved communication greatly, but it is a conversation that we continually have in the district of other ways we can expand our communication. I know Ms. Cruiser and I have the conversation about even kindergarten registration, about kind of doing a rodeo show, making sure we're going out to our communities. I just had this conversation with our early childhood coordinator about how do we get out all of the information around preschool? So that it is a huge effort in the district, and I know that Ms. Cruiser's office really spearheads that family and community engagement. But you will see positions in the budget on that, as well as we will continue to expand our efforts in that because we know we need to educate our families. We need to partner with them, but we need to meet them where they're at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I've talked to the superintendent about this, so... And I've talked to you once about this before, too. I would like to see the data for how the schools are doing. I mean, right now, I don't see the data. I'm taking your word for it that we're targeting those areas, and we probably are doing exactly what you're saying. So this is not a slight against you.
No.
But I'd like to see the data from where the schools were, which school has improved, which school is struggling, and what we're doing to help those schools.
So I'm going to kick that actually over to Superintendent Ware.
Yep. So I actually, even, I would like to thank the school committee for being patient. And so part of my entry plan, I've added a data part on purpose because part of the SOA work that Ms. Belleville is speaking to and some of the way the state has communicated it back out to all superintendents, it actually made sense that I tied it into my findings. So I had planned already to have Ms. Belleville to lead a different version of the state of the schools. However, when the commissioner gave a different edict, for lack of better words, when there's an expectation around how we are supposed to audit ourselves and actually meet the needs of the prioritization plan, April 3rd, you will actually have a good chunk of that data where the next meeting following that, Ms. Belleville and I are working together so that she can do a deeper dive between the elementary, middle, and high. So it's coming. But also just know that there has been a lot of changes that come from the state down to the school level, and that's why it's been a little bit delayed. So it's on its way.
And even to speak of changes, we got a change today around that they actually put out two additional focus areas from the new interim commissioner. And yet, we were expected to have our plans and to have you voting on our plans. So things are coming out pretty much daily.
Yeah, I just, kind of a point of clarification for myself. On the first two focus areas that you outlined, just wanted to understand with those tiered supports really generally, if the idea is that we have the resources fit to kind of manage that system or if we're still evaluating as we're continuing to like monitor the data and implementation of that.
So it's, that's kind of a two-part. It's a yes and no. We do have many things in the district. We also have many needs. One of the things that we are having lots of conversation around is the experience that all our students are experiencing and trying to make things horizontally aligned as well as vertically aligned and to set out common expectations of what that looks like. So yes, we do have some processes. We have some procedures in place. We have data, but we need to continue to expand on that as well as to put solid things in place so that there is equity among all of our buildings.
All right. Thank you. This was very helpful. Welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Assistant Superintendent, for that presentation. We'll move on to Approval of Minutes, 24-3-9.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on March 6, 2024 be approved.
Don, can I get a...
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Reports 24-3-10.
Report on personnel action taken. I'd like to invite Ms. Deb Green up to the podium to give us an update.
Good evening, everyone. Today, it's a thin personnel report, but it was a total of five new hires with four resignations. One of those new hires was a Unit E. We're doing a lot of hiring through food service, replacing and hiring new security monitors. So those are some of the positions that you'll see on there. In addition, our postings on Power School are up to 81. We're beginning to post for our openings that we'll have in the fall due to retirements. We're beginning to see some of those go through. So of the postings on Power School, we have 31 Unit A openings, 19 Unit E openings, and of those, 21 are in Special Ed.
Vice Chair, Don Lamoff.
In the past, we didn't post positions because we were waiting for the budget to be approved. Are we going to put some anticipated openings out there that we know that are coming? Because I see like East Long Meadow and Long Meadow and all those other districts that are approving their budgets and they're putting out their hires. I don't want to pick the pool over before we get a chance.
Right. As soon as we get closer to the end line with the budget process, then a lot of those positions will be going out, and these are also going out as anticipated openings of the retirements and things like that. In addition, we are in the process of planning our hiring fair for the end of April. That will be Thursday, April 25th, I believe it is, at Chicopee Comp, moving it to a more central location. Hopefully, we'll get more traffic that way.
Okay. Any questions? Sonny Brooks.
Deb, how many teachers are we short?
Or do you want...
I would say roughly 30, less than 30, only because we have 31 Unit A postings out there. And Unit A consists of teachers, counselors, psychologists. I know there's many of those out there. So I would even put it at 20.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, sorry, Susan. I didn't see your hand.
That's okay. Thank you. I'd like to thank Mrs. Belleville and also Mrs. Perret because I enjoy reading the conferences that our staff attends and some of the reasons why they're, you know, the professional development they're receiving. So it's interesting reading, and I appreciate the effort that's made, the extra work that's put into it to let us know where each and every staff member is going and why they're going. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just a dovetail on that. Just a dovetail on that. There were 25 employees of our Chicopee Public School System that attended or will be attending a variety of programs, some virtually, some in another state. But there's such programs as for speech and language and hearing from farm to sea to school, Safe and Support Schools, Equity Imperative. There's a lot of DESI licensure update, History, Social, Science Leaders Networking Meeting. There's a lot of exciting programs that are happening, education programs for everyone involved with the students. So learning is an ongoing process. So wish we could go to those.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. We'll move on to New Business, 24-3-11.
Move that the bills, excuse me, move that the bills warrant S-030824 totaling $703,899.76 be approved.
Sonny, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And I'm going to ask School Committee Member Jason Dowd to read the warrants into the official record.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we will be voting on two warrants. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice a little, but I'll make it work. I will read the totals of the two warrants combined into the record, and then we will vote on them individually. For athletics, $41,962. Food services, $34,600. General expenses, $96,184. Grants, $230,362. Maintenance, $186,864. Utilities, $329,950. Special education, $296,515. Student activities, $4,944. Transportation, $1,068,618. Telecommunications, $4,245. And sales tax, $579. For a grand total between the two warrants of $2,294,827.
So we'll be voting on the... Any discussion on the warrants? We're voting on the first warrant. That's warrant S-030824. Can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. Move on to 24-3-12.
Move that the bills warrant S-031524 totaling $1,590,928.76 be approved.
Grace, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
To approve. Any discussion? Susan.
Thank you. There was four warrants in particular that caught my attention, and I got some feedback and some more information from Stacy Burns in the business office. One of them was to school-based services. It was for $187,951. With that monies, we're providing therapeutic support for students at Chicopee Academy and Bellamy Middle School. The second one I'd like to speak about is air handling unit replacement in 11 schools. It's, we did business with Kelo and Bennet here in our city And there was a second warrant for $9,650. And that was designing the air conditioning, enhancing the air quality improvements for all 11 schools. Oak Security at Stephanic School did some work on providing security door devices, keys and locks and other security features for $44,358. And the fourth one I'd like to make mention of is to Paper Education. That was for $132,360. That's a chat-based platform for students and educators, which basically gives students access to educators for tutoring in connection with their courses. So again, it's $132,360. So our district is expending that amount of money to give our students access to tutoring services. I thank you, Superintendent.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other discussion? Sorry, I saw you. Sarah, can we please take a roll call?
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries, 24-3-13.
Move that the request from bodies in motion to use the school's facilities at Bellamy Middle School, May 14th through May 18th, 2024, be approved in accordance with the community use of school facilities policy.
Susan, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to 24-3-14.
Move that the school committee approve the prioritization focus areas for the Chicopee Public Schools' Student Opportunity Act Plan.
Chuck, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? We have presented a plan, and now we're going to formally vote on it. Susan.
I just thank Ms. Belleville for spending a half an hour on the phone with me yesterday morning, answering my questions about the SOA plan.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? So we're going to be approving the plan. I feel more comfortable taking a roll call.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries, 24-3-15.
Transportation and safety topic requested by Mr. Jason Dowd.
Jason.
Yes, thank you very much. So I put this on the agenda. I asked Sarah to have this added on. A few weeks back, I found myself having to take a day off and still needing my daily coffee. Drove down Front Street to grab my coffee, and it absolutely blew my mind, the amount of students that were walking off of campus in the morning, particularly at Chicopee High School. There was, I mean, it was just a snapshot, and it was just a day. There were almost as many students walking off campus as there were walking on campus. And I, it was apparent that they were going to the Sitco across the street, that they were going to the Dunkin' Donuts down the road, you know. And I, to me, you know, my mind instantly went to, if these are students who are being bused to the school, if parents put students on the bus, and they expect the students to get off the bus and obviously to enter in the school, and then the children choose to walk off campus, you know, it's a concern, you know. And I question, you know, in my mind, there's no doubt that the students walking off campus contributes to the truancy numbers, you know, that it affect, you know, that it has a great concern when it comes to safety. It's a very, Front Street being a very busy road, these students needing to cross the road, you know, three schools on Front Street. There's a ton of traffic, the traffic congestion that it causes. You know, in my, again, in my one-day travel, I saw several students crossing with crossing guards. I saw several students just running across the road to get to the Dunkin' Donuts. And, you know, to be honest, you know, I put it on the agenda. I don't know, you know, I had a conversation. I don't know what we can do. I mean, we can't force students to remain on campus, but I worry greatly about the liability should something happen to these students who are, you know, again, as a parent, you assume, you put the kid on the bus, they get off the bus on campus, and they go into the school building. And if parents don't know that these children are leaving campus, crossing the road, that these things, you know, and God forbid something happened, I worry, you know, for the safety of our students and the liability. So I don't know what can be done, you know. I'll be very frank and say, I don't know where exactly the buses drop off. I don't know if the buses could potentially drop off further back on the property to kind of discourage students from leaving. But I put this on the agenda and just wanted to bring it up for discussion because I'm very worried about the amount of students who are walking off of campus.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Don Lamoff.
Yeah, for clarity, what time of day was this?
So this was in the before-school hours.
Before-school hours?
I would say probably approximately 7:20. You know, it's before, before the bell rings for them to be in school, you know. And I understand, you know, the difficulties that come with... I understand the difficulties that come with discipline in school, quite frankly, let alone, you know, us trying to get a student before school hours and trying to, you know, get them into the school building. But, you know, again, the amount of students that was walking off of campus, to me, was extremely concerning.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Well, that concludes our... Oh, Susan has it.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this up, Jason. Can we include your information in with the discussion that's going to take place within the next month or so? Because to me, this ties in with student discipline. I think it would be a good idea.
Any further discussion? That concludes our agenda. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Sandra, I didn't see your hand up.
When the students return to campus, their access into the school building is... Is there a problem with their access into the school building? Or is there a reprimand, or what happens if they're late?
Well, it depends on the time. So it really does depend on the time. So if they actually are going before school, if they get dropped off on the buses before that 7:38, they actually can, they can go to the store or go to Dunkin' Donuts or something like that, or somewhere else, for lack of better words. something like that, or somewhere else, for lack of better words. However, when students are late, that we actually, we would probably have to speak with Mr. Limkey about the numbers of seeing what the late numbers are looking like, because that's something that I haven't dove into, but that is something that we can follow up on. But that is, and also, the, speaking to Mr. Dought's point about where does our responsibility start and stop, that's something we can investigate and get back to you, Bell, as well.
Yeah. And thank you for that information.
Are you all set?
Yep, thanks.
Any other discussion? That concludes our agenda. Thank you for joining us, and everyone have a great rest of your week.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries.